Good afternoon. This time we're gonna call our work session for the Edgefield County Planning Commission to order December eighth, twenty twenty-two. And that over for business reports on Tuesday, November first, twenty twenty-two, county council voted on the fire island submitted for them for consideration for the planning commission. Camp and RV Park, chapter twenty-four, section twenty-four, seventy-nine, Edgefield County ordinance and rezoning application submitted by Alan Thomas for property ID one forty-five oh nine double R zero four four triple R. You can come in.
So Camp Browns and RV Parks that y'all passed, that was its final reading, so it is. Well, actually, no, it's got one more reading, but it passed its public hearing. There were no changes, no recommended changes, so it'll go through just fine. The first rezoning application that was submitted to y'all, it's gone through its, all three of its readings, which will leave one more to go after that one. And that's it for reports.
Okay, good. Okay, we have a guest speaker down there, Daryl Simmons here. Yes, you, okay. He, regarding that Apple Road with, having an old business, so let's go in a new business, we're gonna be discussing the land development application for a pole wedding in the eight oh two Airport Road in Johnston. I don't know how they got to be Johnson, I thought it was Trenton, but anyway. Party ID one eighty-four, double R, double R, zero three six, triple R. So we proceed to look at that particular island. Eighty-two point seven acres, you probably looked at the map on it and so forth, and rural agriculture in unzoned. And the pole used it for wedding event space. And we know what wedding do that gets you in trouble sometimes, a problem. According to this, permitted use is permitted, application compliant, everything meet that, comprehensive plan meet that, I think, everything, and all other be de-hec and cycling department of transportation approval, so this time. Simon, you here to discuss this, or you just? Are you the, are you the, are you the owner, are you the?
Um, one person go to the mic and speak into it, otherwise the recorders will not hear anything.
We're gonna speak.
Okay, so his name is Daryl Simon, him and his wife own the property. I would be running the wedding venue and I'm, we're kind of business partners.
What your name is?
Taylor Paget.
Taylor Paget, okay. All right, you wanna kinda give us some detail on what you got going here?
Yes, so what we're planning is a very upscale wedding venue, a eight to ten thousand square foot building. It would not be a barn, it would be more of a, more, it would look more like a country club with board and batten siding, stacked stone. And we are, I've got some pictures and stuff, I think y'all might have the pictures. We're hoping for two stories with a loft upstairs. We are planning for no more than two hundred and fifty guests inside capacity. We will have room outside for seating if needed in the ceremony location outside. Currently on the property is a cabin and some buildings where they store some equipment and stuff.
Okay, so you say y'all gonna be partnership into it?
Yeah, I have a history in weddings, I've done weddings for ten years now, and currently I own a store in Augusta, Southern Willow Market. We do home decor, fresh flowers, we do wedding floral, and I see a need for a nice beautiful wedding venue out this way. I personally live in Edgefield County, and I've always wanted to, I've done a lot of weddings out here. I've done a few at the shooting complex and some on private property, but I think that a venue of this size and this look is needed.
Look, you know, this information we have here, these are just probably proposals.
Yeah, these are just.
Kind of vision of what you really want right now.
This is just a vision, kind of like a mood board of what we're thinking the look would be. Nothing is set in stone, obviously.
I know, 'cause it look pretty kinda.
Well, she said upscale.
I know, I know.
It's gonna be more of an expensive, you know, wedding venue, and that is because we want, we are not interested in throwing big parties. There will be a sheriff on site at all times, we're not interested in, you know, tons of alcohol flowing, all of us are actually sober, we don't drink, so we're not, you know, we're not gonna tell people they can't, but we will have a sheriff on site, which is required at every wedding I do, we have a police officer and a fire marshal on site, just for safety purposes. But the reason that we wanna be a higher class venue is because, or more, you know, upscale, is to eliminate anybody just throwing a party, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I got your point, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. Let's say what, eighty-five acres roughly something? Eighty-two point.
How many acres do you think you're gonna be clearing for? Can you hear me?
Yeah, oh yeah, I can, I'm sorry.
How many acres you think you're gonna be clearing for your area, 'cause?
It's all already cleared where the venue would be. I don't know if you can zoom in, but the actual building, we staked it out last week, Daryl staked it out, and based on the square footage that we have, which you guys don't have an updated version of that, 'cause we turned that in a few months ago, but we have updated square footage, this is not exact, but this is roughly six thousand square feet downstairs enclosed space, and it fits with tons of room to spare, so we would not be clearing out, I mean, I don't think any trees. All of the, all of the trees that are there, we've already, you know, kind of planned, yeah, we've kind of planned around the trees that are there.
It's just the surrounding area, I'd like to see a nice buffer.
Yes, and, and one thing that we did consider is the noise, you know, weddings can be very loud. Well, I reached out to a DJ friend of mine, and they never play music louder than ninety decibels, and I did some research, and ninety decibels you can't hear outside of one hundred feet, I believe, and if you look, we're, you know, four hundred feet towards the next property line. And so I don't feel that, and that's not including the buffer that the trees would give you, so I don't feel that noise would be an issue.
Now, that pond is already there, right? It come all the way to the airport, yeah. I'm gonna, I looked at the property, I was hoping I was right, 'cause I won't get in the air, but I'm more like I used to, but.
It's gorgeous out there.
Well, have you, have you seen it over in Fruit Hill Road into Lily County, have you been over there?
Yeah, tin roof, I'm actually good friends, yeah, it's very similar, just without, theirs is huge, it's gorgeous.
And they got the pond site and all this. And you know, I mean, that's a real, I like the way that designed, and when I looked at your map, yeah, I said, you know, that's someone that they would, that'd be a good.
Yeah, yeah, I'm actually good friends with the owners out there.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But years ago, they asked me to run their venue, but I had already, we had just signed the lease on the location that we're at in Augusta, I have a store, like I said, and I just signed the lease and did not wanna commit to anything like running a venue, but now I'm, now I've got a team and I'm ready to do something like this. Sorry, that's my little guy.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Does someone live on the property currently?
No, nobody lives.
We stay out there, but we also have a house in Augusta, so we're back in the polls, I'm out there every day, but at night I'm. Is the cabin what I'm seeing here, the clearing there with the?
No, that is the storage building, that's the cabin right there, yeah.
The other space is storage? But it's?
The old peach, old peach shed, I think, is what it's used to be.
How far is the venue from that cabin, or?
From the cabin, it's probably four hundred feet, five hundred feet from the venue to the cabin. I'm just basing it off.
The G I S shows about five hundred and twenty-five feet. That's a pretty good distance.
Wow, you're fancy. I was just guessing.
So the X is the proposed site for the venue?
Yes.
On that screen?
And since we've gone out there and staked it out, it is just a little towards the, maybe just a hair over where it's a little more clear.
Doc, how do they, from a sense of restrooms and things like that, I know it's gotta be approved for de-hec and all that. I guess it's just by capacity of the septic, or?
So, being a commercial building, they will determine their needed floor area by what's inside the building, so if they have some fixed seating, that will change the calculation, if they have unfixed seating, tables, chairs, no tables and chairs, dance floors, bar areas, all of those are calculated at different rates. And once the occupancy has been set, they will have to have so many plumbing fixtures per occupant. And then whatever that flow rate is, that's what de-hec will use to size their septic system. So if they go with two hundred guests inside as a maximum, they'll have to design their plumbing for two hundred people. If they go, if they want to say, well, we might expand in the future and have up to three, four hundred guests, then they'll have to go ahead and size it for that. It all just depends on the calculations when the review is done.
As far as the square footage inside and outside, there will be no fixed furniture besides the foyer, which I'm not sure if the foyer is in your plant. It, it, an older version of it is in your plans, it's gonna be about seven hundred and ninety square feet, that will have some, like a couch and a fireplace and a coffee table. As far as the rest of the venue, we want the couples to come in and tell us where they want tables and chairs, so we're gonna have a big storage room where all of the tables and chairs are stackable and put away.
Again, the only question, I'll take it one step further, is just because you're on a pond, and I don't know where that septic system will wind up, it will probably be not too far away from where the venue is. I'm maybe talking out of turn here, but sometimes those separate systems, if they do any type of level of seepage or contamination or anything like that, it would get to the pond, it's a shared, so it's one thing if the pond is maybe all on your property.
Is the pond all on your property?
I think the property line goes down the middle of the pond, right? That's what I'm seeing.
Well, don't you also own the other property?
We own both sides of the pond, ninety-two acres on the other side. My four does live at the far end of the pond. Good, okay.
Yeah, they own everything but this little piece right here.
On that, we pump, you know, we pump by phone.
You can, I mean, I know, like, for a church, you know, they're not using the facility six days a week, they're using it one day a week, kind of.
Right, but also remember, this is a commercial venue, so their septic sizing will be much smaller than it would be for like a house. For example, they only have to have one urinal per one hundred and twenty-five men on the property.
Yeah, in my experience with weddings, I cannot stand when there's a line.
For women, I mean.
We've already planned on three stalls for women plus a handicap, and then three urinals plus a handicap for the men, so, you know, that could change, but it's definitely gonna be more than two, I would think, just because I don't, I personally hate when there's a line out the door.
That's the only thing I could see being a question, if it even would be a question, really, is just de-hec and how they deal with the septic system.
And Edgefield County supplies water out there? Does Edgefield County supply water out there? So the venue will be on a well?
It will be, the kitchen will only be a warming station, that's something I've seen is pretty successful in the past, so that there's gonna be no, no need for a restaurant license, and the ice will be provided by us, an ice company, bagged ice, we'll have a chest for the ice and, and water, we'll have water, you know, filtered water.
So you're not gonna have a commercial kitchen there then?
We will have a warming station, you know, with a refrigerator, a freezer, and some prep space.
Doc, how does the fire suppression deal with assembly like that, would that be of a concern?
It'll depend on the different areas, but they could get big enough to require sprinklers, in which case that would, I mean, it would increase the cost of their project, but it can be done with a fire pump and a, on a well. But that would have to go through state fire marshals office.
The well, the water, if you're a well, you probably got a good well, you got a good water table in there.
Yeah, I think they do out there, yeah.
It's just the requirements for a lot of that can be very intense, and so the way you build it, the way you plan it, the sense of maybe it needs to be with some, non-combustibles or some, just be cognitive of how that fire sprinkler could affect you.
Okay.
In your design.
Yeah, definitely.
So we would consider them an A-three occupancy. So if they go with fire-rated exterior walls, they could go up to eleven thousand five hundred square feet before they had to get sprinklers. If they go with classic VB, five B type construction, which means everything is flammable, they could go up to six thousand square feet. But if a building, if they're gonna build a bigger building than that, they're probably gonna go with a metal building, in which case they would actually probably be somewhere in type two, which as you can see is up to fifteen thousand five hundred square feet.
Well, it's just the imagery that I'm seeing is a lot of obviously wood frame type, you know, looks of, again, it's just a thought.
Yeah.
Go into design, just watch that, that can catch you.
Okay, yeah, definitely. And it, when we said ten thousand square feet, we had no idea how, how big that actually was until we got out there, and so it's probably gonna be closer, you know, to eight thousand, but we just wanted some room, you know, if we would like to make it bigger. But it, I think we do want metal, yeah, yeah, it'll be a steel-framed building.
But one thing that you will want to consider is that in the state of South Carolina, all buildings of assembly have to be engineered and designed by architect.
Yeah. And I'm, I designed these plans and I am by no means an architect, or my parents are contractors, so maybe it's in my blood, but we will, we, our next step is to have an architect actually take this, and even the measurements are probably, they'll probably look at it and say, this is not, you know, this is not doable, so that's our next step, is to have an architect actually look at it.
Right, that makes sense.
Do you have any, I guess, with the owner, any long-term aspirations for the project, I guess it would be something that's some, that's actually all working out, but I mean.
If, if, for some reason the wedding venue in a few, you know, ten, fifteen years? He does, he.
My other question is, would you allow other events other than weddings?
Yes, absolutely.
So birthday parties, corporate parties?
Yeah, one hundred percent.
Family reunions?
Yeah, it's, it's not gonna be just for weddings, yeah. That will be the money maker, obviously, but we'll have plenty of dates, Christmas parties, you know, corporate events.
Quiet on this side.
I know.
Oh, y'all married, must be the enemy. And I think, I think it's a real, real nice project, isn't it?
Thank you. I definitely think there's a need for it, I mean, there is the one in Saluda, but it is, you know, a little further out, and there's not one, I feel, there, there are some different venues, you know, but not one like this. There's some older houses that have been turned into venues, there's the shooting complex that can be used, and then, of course, churches, but we kinda wanna just do a different, a timeless feel, because a lot of people are choosing the barn look, but it's not gonna be around forever.
It's trendy.
Yeah, it is very trendy.
Any more questions from, before you take a seat? All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see here. That's it until? So we're gonna adjourn at six o'clock, and then we'll discuss it again. What was that, adjourn? On the favor? Adjourn. All right, sign, Patty's down the side.
Um, you could, but.
You're good.
Good evening. This time we will call the Edgefield County Planning Commission for December the eighth, twenty twenty-two, call it to order. Order, we have our invocation, pray heaven and father, we thank you for the stay and for the opportunity that granted us to meet again, we thank you for the fellowship, father, for the peace of mind that we have, and for all you done for us, and we pray that you go with us through this meeting, that we do it in order, and for the best of this county, and for the citizens, for the order that we have, we bless us and keep in okay. In Jesus' name we pray. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is same, one nation, under God, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. I need a motion to approve for the meeting.
Make a motion.
Second.
I would, if I was gendered, yeah, okay.
Don't forget the vote.
Yeah, I know, I'm just. Okay, I'm all right, gonna get. They got the wrong one. I'm back, I'm gonna write one here, December, okay. Okay, all in favor of the agenda? Second, all in favor right hand? All right, now we have approval of the minutes for September eighth work session. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor right hand? Approve for September eighth meeting minutes. Second?
Second.
All in favor right hand? Approve for October thirteenth work session meeting. Second?
Second.
All in favor right hand? Reports?
No reports.
No report. Okay, I have a guest speaker, Daryl Simmons, on the wedding venue at eight oh two Airport Road, this time we're gonna have over a public hearing on the proposing wedding venue at eight oh two Airport Road in Johnston, party ID one eighty-four, double R, double R, zero three six, triple R. Public hearing, we're gonna have, now we're going to, those that want to come here, we're gonna actually come up to the podium, state your name and address and so forth, make a comment, and on the subject that we had hand. So, Rick Henry.
Hey, how are y'all? You know, really don't know what it's all about, pretty much, other than that there's a sign next to the road sign, there's a public hearing on this side, just really want some information about what's going on, we heard there's a wedding venue, but that's all we know, and that, and like, why does it need to be rezoned in the first place?
Okay, so first off, it's not getting rezoned, this is a land development application, anytime you open a business in Edgefield County, you have to go before the planning commission for them to approve the use of that land for that commercial purpose. The wedding venue is shown on the screen, the nearest property line from its location is about four hundred feet away from where the actual building will be. They're not gonna disturb the land in terms of removing the trees and forests, it's all gonna stay in its natural state. The property will remain unzoned, and I'd be happy to answer any other simple questions if you have them.
All right, would it change any of the land around it, with far as the taxes or the, were the zoning on those?
No, so tax zoning is completely separate from use zoning, and tax zoning only affects the property that has the use on it, so their taxes will change on their property, but it will not affect the taxes of any surrounding properties.
Will have any effect on, like, any noise ordinance could be invoked for, like, you know?
Edgefield County?
They're having an event, and I'm hunting, you know, they don't like the gun going off or something.
So the noise ordinance goes into effect at nine o'clock at night and stops at seven o'clock in the morning. Any unreasonably loud noise during those times can constitute a noise ordinance violation, whether it be them or someone else. And that is in effect countywide and has been for twenty-five years.
I mean, there's, people deer hunt, you know, it gets light before seven o'clock, I know there's plenty of deer shot before seven o'clock.
And if that happens and somebody gets disturbed and they call, then the game warden or whoever will go out there and check on it, and if it's legal, then you won't have a problem. But noise ordinance is nine PM to seven AM.
So nobody's ever had a problem with people shooting in this county before?
If they have, that would go through the sheriff's department, not the planning commission, so I have no idea. I'm sure that the sheriff department gets plenty of noise complaints, but, I mean, that would not be information that I would have.
Okay, and what about, so that's reciprocal too, I guess, so any noises past nine o'clock at night would be subject to?
Correct.
And what's deemed?
So if it's measurable of fifty decibels at the property line.
And would have any, what about the, like, alcohol sales or anything, or?
So, sled.
What's the number of people expected to, whereas it looks like a pretty big venue, not like a small?
So in the work session, they stated they could have anywhere up to two hundred people for an event. Whether that'll be the average, that'll probably depend on their business, you know, how much interest they have, a lot of weddings aren't that big, some of them are bigger, the building will be designed for around two hundred occupants.
Can I exceed that, I mean, you could say it should be two hundred, is there, is that a restriction, or is it?
That is not a restriction.
You're saying stuff.
But they will have a, well, if the building's occupancy is two hundred, then they can't have more than two hundred people in the building, or the sheriff will shut them down. Selling alcohol on the premises, they will have a sheriff deputy on the premises.
Well, I think that's all I wanted to ask right now, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let's see, my hope, Miss, what that Brooks, Brooks, yes, ma'am?
How many events do they plan to have throughout the year, is it gonna be one a weekend, or? Sure, sorry, I've never been to one of these, I don't know.
My name's Taylor Paget, we are planning to only do one event per weekend, now that's not to say we won't do any weeknight events, if, you know, we're planning on weddings to be the number one form of business, but we are open to corporate events, holiday parties, charity, charity events, things like that, but one wedding per weekend would be our max.
Get closer to you, ma'am.
And if I'm correct, y'all are going to build a building and parking area as well, I assume?
Correct, yes.
What kind of traffic should we expect, and how's that gonna be managed for people coming and going?
We will be requiring a sheriff on site at each event, whether it's a wedding or anytime there's over one hundred guests, it is for us a requirement to have a sheriff, and we will make sure that there's a sheriff on site at the venue, but also one at the road. And as far as traffic goes, in my experience, I've been doing weddings for about ten years now, in my experience, people are coming and going at all different times of the day, so you're not gonna have, even if you had a wedding where there was two hundred guests, that's probably only eighty to ninety cars because of families and spouses and, you know, plus ones, and they don't all leave at the same time, so it shouldn't affect traffic too much.
I think Rex touched on all the other questions I have, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, come.
I can't think of all questions, I don't. No, I just noticed on the thing, there's one section of park that's across the street, do y'all have any plans for that? Do y'all have any plans for that? There's an acre on the other side. No, I think it's one acre. It's only showing on the, on the-
Right, there's no plans for that in the way that is, mostly swamp land with two grids come together.
Yeah, it's very swampy, yeah. No, I'm just saying, you know, I'm the owner of the land directly, or that joins that swamp, piece of swamp property in fact. So that's just why I have a concern.
And I'm Daryl Simon, your neighbor, and I think there's enough footage between that building and that road. I don't think you're gonna hear anything and if you do, it's just where neighbors come tell us, we'll shut it down or turn it down or whatever we need to do to stay within code, be friendly.
I'm not really have that big concern with it. It's just that on the other end, since I do use the property, you know, in the mornings and evenings, you know.
Big in the mic, will you, okay, look at it.
I mean, I do use the property in the mornings and evenings, I, you know, heard my deer hunt and then with a gun goes a boom to a certain extent, you know, I just don't wanna be any problem. And that's not even very often, but-
It's not gonna bother us there, because Barney's got nine hundred and fifty acres around us that are always hunting back in there. And when you do hear a gunshot, it's not that obnoxious. And if it was during a wedding, it's okay because that's what they do.
As far as your question about the noise, the opposite way, the most that a wedding would ever be at the source, at the speakers, would be a hundred decibels. And we are four hundred feet from the closest property line and he actually owns the property across from that. But from you, I believe we're, I can't see that, but a thousand, yeah. And at the source, if it's a hundred decibels, fifty-two feet away, I believe that drops down to zero. So you shouldn't hear any music. But like you said, if you did, you know, let us know.
I'm not really worried about that. I hear more stuff from the airport flying a lot of planes around than a-
Yeah, but I doubt that anyone would hear a gunshot, you know, with the music and everything that we would be hearing at the venue.
But it wouldn't be at night. It'd just be like six thirty, you know.
Yeah, we won't be awake yet, so we'll be fine. Yes, we will have a curfew as well too, so. Typically, the curfew music is typically at the weddings around the CSRA. They shut the music off at eleven o'clock. Alcohol, if there is any, stops serving thirty minutes prior to whatever time the event is.
I mean, I'm not too worried about it if I have a wedding, I'll be down.
Yeah. Most weddings that I've done have shut off at ten o'clock. So music ends right at ten and alcohol is stopped being served at nine thirty.
Okay, I think that's all I have right now. I appreciate it.
Any more, anyone else on? Last caller, any more? Okay, this time we will close our public hearing. Old business, we don't have an old business, so our new business is to vote on the land development application for proposing the wedding venue on Airport Road in Johnston. Do I have any, uh, motion to approve, to approve the, uh? Motion second, in discussion, in discussion, in discussion, in discussion. Okay, all in favor of approving the wedding venue to go to the other, right hand, folders, I have it. Now motion to adjourn. Motion second to adjourn, all in favor right hand, meeting adjourned, appreciate y'all. So you, it'd be between you and them.